It is six thirty-three. I'm gonna bring this meeting of the Landale City Council to order. Before I ask the city clerk to give us a roll call, I have a, I guess this is a mayor's message prior to the meeting, a message regarding the cable television. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Landale City Council. We are currently experiencing technical difficulties. Doesn't say beyond our control, but it's understood. With Channel Three broadcasting, we are working on resuming our streaming as soon as possible. Thankfully, viewers are still able to watch our city council meetings via this evening live through the Landale City TV YouTube channel and our city website at www.landalecity.org. So that's www.landalecity.org who would like to watch it on the website. You can also watch it on YouTube channel as well as Landale City TV. And we will get that back up as soon as we can. With that, I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give us the roll call now.
Mayor Protem Hoffman-Bornan?
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Here.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Alright, so our flag salute this evening will be held by Councilwoman Bernadette Suarez. And we're gonna ask Pastor Joyce Magalindie from Hope Chapel in Hawthorne to lead us in a word of inspiration.
Everyone, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council, staff, everyone. I'd like to start with a scripture. It's from John fourteen twenty-seven, and it's the Lord Himself, and He says, "Peace I leave with you. My peace I give you, not as the world gives do I give it to you. Let not your heart be troubled; neither let it be afraid." Let's pray. And Father God, we do want to acknowledge you this evening, and we do thank you for your peace. The peace we have with you, the peace we have within, and the peace that we have with one another. You are the source. We thank you for your blessing upon this city, Lord. Every citizen from young to old, we thank you for those that you have called to protect and to serve. Pray your blessing and protection upon them. We thank you for your servants that you've raised up tonight, Lord God, to make decisions that indeed benefit the people of Landale. We thank you for your presence. We thank you that we can come to you, whether it's globally, nationally, locally, or even personally. I personally pray this, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor, for those words of inspiration. Thank you for coming tonight. Alright, let's hear from our captain. Captain Allen, Public Safety Report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here tonight to present the Public Safety Report from February twenty-third through March seventh. On February twenty-fifth, approximately eight-thirty PM, deputies Doherty and Gonzalez conducted a traffic stop of a car for a vehicle code violation at one hundred and forty-seventh Street and Freeman Avenue in the city of Landale. While speaking with the driver, who was driving without his driver's license in his possession, both deputies could smell the strong odor of marijuana emitting from inside the vehicle. They detained both occupants of the vehicle. During a search of vehicle, an unregistered firearm was located in a backpack on the front passenger floor board. The passenger was arrested for possession of an unregistered firearm, and the driver was cited for driving without a license in his possession. On February twenty-sixth, at about six AM, Deputy Compa responded to the four thousand block of Redondo Beach Boulevard regarding a check the area call for service. Deputy Compa contacted the owner of the business, who stated he received a call from his, from his business and believed someone was inside. He also stated the business did not open until ten AM, and no one should be there. While checking the location, Deputy Compa located and arrested a male adult who had broken into the business and stole several items. The suspect was arrested for felony burglary. Last, on March sixth, at approximately one AM, Deputy Rosales conducted a traffic stop near Rosecrans Avenue and Freeman Avenue regarding several traffic violations. When he contacted the driver, he immediately smelled a strong odor of marijuana emitting from inside the vehicle. After he detained the three occupants in the vehicle for a narcotics investigation, he located a unregistered loaded firearm along with two large baggies of marijuana and a digital scale. All three occupants were arrested for possession of unregistered firearm and possession of marijuana for sales. In regards to crime, twenty twenty-two continues its downward trend from twenty twenty-one. There have been, to date, there have been no homicides or rapes in the city. Robberies are down fifty percent. Aggravated assaults are down thirty percent. Thefts are down thirty-nine percent, and grand theft autos are down twenty-four percent. This gives an overall crime rate that is down twenty-seven percent to date over last year. This concludes my report. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Okay, are there any questions of the captain's report?
Yes, ma'am.
Captain Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Just recently, I heard that up in my quadrant, it would probably be between the forty-five hundred block and the forty-seven hundred block, north or south of one-seventieth Street. We've had a couple of incidents again of the catalytic converter being stolen. What should we be advising residents? And are we catching any of these thieves?
You know, the biggest thing that people are doing now is they're actually marking their catalytic converters because then thieves are, they're in the process of taking them, and they see they have identi, they have identifying numbers. People are putting their driver's license numbers and things like that. Thieves have a tendency to not actually take them. Of course, the opposite side of that is also though, when these thieves are, when these thefts are happening at night, sometimes people aren't obviously gonna maybe see them until they actually have stolen them. But what that does is, it does allow us to at least recover, you know, recover them. The biggest thing that, on the preventive end, is that our trap unit has done several search warrants in this area and the surrounding areas in which catalytic converters have been, a lot of catalytic converters have been recovered. So we are working on it on the theft end. So as far as thefts inside the city, I don't think we've had too many specifically, but we have had several search rounds, search warrants in the surrounding areas dealing with chop shops. And those are where we've been recovering a lot of catalytic converters. But as far as the preventive measure, it's more a case of, you know, marking, marking your catalytic converter down. And since that's a concern, I'll do a little bit more research going forward, and then I'll even have maybe even more preventive measures that I can speak to the next time I, next time I come. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, sorry, I had a, if Rhonda's done.
No, thank you.
Yeah, definitely.
Yes, ma'am.
Just, just to add on that, I had seen on social media that City of Redondo Beach did some kind of a seminar preventative measures for catalytic converter theft. Because we're hearing it all over. Even when we went to a walk this past weekend for Metro, a resident was keeping an eye out because he saw possibly an individual trying to scout the area to try and take those. And then another thing is the, I believe the contract cities, they just did some sort of, I think it was a, they went to Sacramento to advocate, I think, for policies around the theft and how to strengthen that. So just wanted to add that to the conversation out there. But maybe Redondo Beach's seminar had some interesting info or some kind of devices that residents might wanna invest in so that they can prevent that being stolen. Just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with actual devices. I knew, I do know some cities have had, like, I've put on a program where they, people are being able to bring their cars in, and they've, they've, you know, marked their, their catalytic converters. But I'll do a little bit more research, and I'll have, definitely have some more information for you next time I come.
I'm told there's also some type of a cage that they can purchase to put over their catalytic converter so that thief gets underneath, and it's not accessible for them to steal.
That's definitely probably the case. I'm not, I haven't focused myself on the catalytic converters. So like I said, I'll definitely have definite points for our members. It has not, catalytic converters have, in the past, have been an issue, and it kinda ebbs and flows. It has not actually been a spike in our city through, towards the end of last year. If it's coming back again, that's a good thing to know. So I'll definitely have our people focus on that.
Captain, I want to thank you for giving the crime statistics. It's really helpful to get a holistic sense of how we're doing on crime and crime prevention. You mentioned that twenty twenty-two is, the trend is trending down, including robberies, you know, fifty percent, and of course, grand theft, out of twenty-four percent. So I think some of that has contributed to the great work that your deputies are providing, the services and patrol that your deputies are providing. I really appreciate that, and we really appreciate that. I would say, going back to the catalytic converter, my neighbor, he's had two attempts on his catalytic converter. And I believe he has a cage on it. One was before, of course, he got the cage, and of course, they don't know there's a cage until they attempt to steal it or what have you. You know, and that in and of itself, even though that spoils it, the chances that they can be able to steal it. But it doesn't prevent the confrontation that could occur when you see someone trying to steal the catalytic converter. You're not gonna just say, oh, there's a, there's a cage on there, so I'm alright. You know, you still may be tempted to confront them. You know, what have you.
Yeah, most, I mean, obviously, most of the thefts, I mean, if people are doing it during the daytime, that's pretty brazen, and hopefully.
Oh, no, there was an incident in the daytime, in Landale.
That's pretty, yeah, that's pretty brazen. And hopefully, when people are seeing that, noticing it, obviously, they would call us, and we'd come out right away. Most of them do happen at night when people are asleep. The daytime ones are a lot more rare. And a person that's doing that definitely needs to be, that's, that's a whole different level when you're doing it during the daytime. So that's something we definitely have to be monitoring.
Alright, thank you for your report. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is oral communications. Oral communication is when you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda, we ask that you line up behind this gentleman, and when it becomes your turn, if you approach the podium, if you start with your name first, that would help us out greatly. When the amber light comes on, you have thirty seconds to wrap it up. Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk, for the assist there. Yes, sir.
Yes, council, and Mayor Protem, and mayor, and city manager, and city attorney. I'd like to address an issue which is pretty near and dear to my heart. The forty-two unit condo project on one hundred and fifty-third has been somewhat completed, and has had virtually no activity for several months. It's been sitting there vacant. Now, I suspect, and the community can probably help me out here, the permits may have expired on this property. I think we now have another example of a alleged businessperson that does not play by the rules. He has another project under construction on Marine and Formona, I think it is, and it's about halfway done. But I think the city council and all the other appropriate personnel should get a report on what in the world is going on in this condo project. There's a rumor afloat that they're not gonna be sold as condos, they're gonna be converted to apartments, which was never part of the original permitting process. Furthermore, in the permitting process, there is no monitoring program by the city. So there is no way, without monitoring, that there won't be abuse of the low, moderate income units that are supposed to be reserved for those people. So it, at any rate, if I am not mistaken, if the time has lapsed, and the builder is basically refusing to comply with the permit and requirements, I think it's time to look at canceling the building permit, make them go through the whole process again. Maybe we'll get these people's attention so they'll learn to play by the rules. It's, it's amazing that we continually have these businesses or business persons that choose to totally ignore the rules like they don't apply to them. And I'm pretty personally sick and tired of that. Also, the RJ problem has not apparently been addressed adequately. There's continuous ongoing violations of code, continuous ongoing violations of heavy trucks being pulled onto Manziel, illegally parking trailers disconnected from the trucks, spilling, spilling materials which is not cleaned up unless I call, and then, I don't know who ends up cleaning it up, but if I didn't call, it never gets cleaned up. And then it gets brushed down the street when the street stripper comes. And then we're violating the Cleaning Water Act because the stuff's going into the sanitary, the, not sanitary, the storm sewer at the corner one hundred and fifty-six and Manziel. Another violation. I'm running out of time. I'll come back on another time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Pino, the library manager over at Longdale. I have a short list of announcements to make today. Library is not open at a hundred percent capacity. And as a reminder to everyone, we are a counted facility, so masks are still required until further notice. So visit the library, make sure you have a mask, and the foot traffic has definitely increased for the past two weeks, so it's been giving us a little sense of some normality. Unfortunately, the tax forms and instructions have not arrived yet at the library. I don't know what the holdup has been, but if anybody needs tax forms, we can always print them out for them. Our meeting room and our study room will be available now to book if anybody needs a study room or meeting room. And we also have laptops available to check out, so I want to make sure everybody's taking advantage of that. Our storytime hours is going to be taking place every Wednesday at eleven-thirty with Ms. Marlene. She's our children's librarian, and the testing site is still taking place in front of the library. And you do not need any proof of insurance, so take advantage of it. And it's not any of those rapid tests, it does take twenty-four to forty-eight hours to get your results. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Randal Abram, Longdale resident. Short-term rentals, AKA Airbnbs, are illegal in the City of Longdale, but what exactly has the city done to prevent their proliferation? Have they posted signs throughout the city? In order to operate a business, one must obtain a license. Homeowners operating in or miss bypass the law and put neighbors at risk from a transient, unregulated population. We've all heard of the party homes and violence occurring in these illegal rentals. The latest incident occurred in Inglewood with four individuals shot and killed. Unfortunately, Longdale's ban on short-term rentals is not easily enforced due to its reactive policy to enforcement. Was the purpose of enacting laws and then failing to enforce them making it the job of its residents to report these violations? Last month, I reported eight short-term rentals to code enforcement, and there are many more I could have reported. One of these had been reported a couple of years ago, and this location is still active. It was easy to identify this owner, some of his interior, online photos was Airbnb, matched photos online on Redfin for when the house was last sold. Another risk is the high percentage of physical assaults and spying that are taking place in these rentals that the companies have attempted to cover up with non-disclosure clauses. Licensed hotels are required to adhere to standards of hygiene and safety measures. There is nothing requiring Airbnb to provide the same cleanliness and fire safety measures because they operate outside the law. The law also prevents pedophiles from living near schools and parks, but nothing prevents them from renting a room in a house near these areas. How many schools and parks are operating in Longdale, and how many Airbnbs are illegally operating next door? I know of one in my neighborhood. Residents shouldn't have to live with the loss of street parking or possibility of these homes bringing violence to the neighborhoods. Please consider posting signs in front of any home reported to the city stating that Airbnbs are illegal and present a danger due to their unregulated nature. Educating the public that these rentals are illegal should be a first step, followed by increased fines. Recently passed Senate Bill sixty allows cities to raise the maximum fines for violation of any ordinance relating to a residential short-term rental to fifteen hundred for a first violation, three thousand for a second violation of the same ordinance within one year, and five thousand for each additional violation of the same ordinance as one year of the first violation. If Longdale admitted the municipal code to add these fines, this would help deter short-term rentals in the city. In addition to increasing these fines, notices should be sent to Airbnb, vacation rentals, and all the corporations sponsoring these short-term rentals that it hosts that can face significant fines for this illegal activity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jay Gould, forty-six twenty-four West Hundred Seventy, Straction Street, Longdale. I went on the metro walk. I went on all the walks. Before I even start, I need your assurances that I won't get swatted and people come to my house like they did when Debbie Haller was involved. Because I, I'm going to have a fight with you guys, but I don't want to be taken down. If they're going to shoot me, do it through the heart so I'm gone first time, because that was not cool, what you guys did with Debbie Hallen. And thanks for hiring Sean. Me and him probably will never always get along, but at least he's a smart guy. He knows what's going on. He understands the people in the city. You guys did a good job there. Now, on the metro, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't along the railroad tracks residential? So can I put a seven-unit, uh, business right next to the railroad with seven stories? Is it, because this is residential. You're running a commercial train that gets paid, they're coming right through our area. What is that going to do for Longdale? No one's going to see anything in there. They're going to be looking in my windows like they did when they first brought the metro through Long Beach, and they, guy kept going back and forth for a year, and he seen a girl there, and then he got off the train, he knew where she was because he could see her, and he raped her. Look at that case up. Is, they do it to me, I'm coming after you guys. And Rhonda, no disrespect, I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings, you should not be on the board because you can get sued. My lawyer was there because you are voting on something that's right next to your tracks. I can't be on the board. Robert Polamale is moving on, I hear, thank God.
Just real quick, I'm going to ask you to just address the board. There's a whole and no individual members, if you will.
Yeah, but I know you're moving on. Maybe you guys should step down from the board and get somebody, citizens on the board. I don't want to, you know, I want it to go right down, four or five freeway, down the middle, and then cut across and come over the top of Hawthorne Boulevard. You know how that'll look, like the Eiffel Tower? It'll be beautiful. People will want to build on Hawthorne Boulevard, say, look at, hey, look at all the, what are they going to get from the railroad out there on the tracks? They ain't going to get anything. We're not going to get anything from it, but if they see the businesses along Hawthorne Boulevard, you know, wow, look at that, it's built up in the air, it's beautiful. It's a great thing, but no. And then they want to wreck Rhonda because she's going to be right there? They're expanding the freeway on Torrance. You see that? They're expanding the freeways everywhere and they're going up with twenty-foot walls. If you put it downwind, you pour passing ordinance where they got to put a twenty-foot wall, because I don't want them looking in my window to see my daughters, see my grandkids, and get hurt. And if they don't want to do that, then tell them to go somewhere. And they built a tower. Have you ever gone to the Metro Tower, Gold Inlay? They paid thirty-six million dollars for that. Why do they need that for meetings? Why do they put that in Longdale? And the, but you know what, we're a poor one, because when I went to the Torrance meetings, they had all the union players there, all the union players, and they're saying, yeah, we need to have this go through. It doesn't affect them, that's why they want jobs. Three more years if you hop on Boulevard, that's more job.
Okay, wrap it up for me, Mr. Gould. Wrap it up for me.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Oh, no problem. Thank you.
Sorry, guys.
Thank you.
And no disrespect.
All right. Did you, did you do oral communication already? Well, well, just real quick, yeah, one minute, because oral communications, you can talk about a hundred subjects, as long as you do it in, within that timeframe, so you don't get.
On the catalytic converter problem, I spoke to a young lady earlier today, and she had a small pickup which was a victim of this, and of course, it sits higher, it makes it easier for the criminals to get under it. She did have a cage built and put on the truck, but they didn't fix things because they yanked all the sensors loose, and now it won't pass smog because you got to check engine light on. So the catalytic converter itself is not just the issue, it's the surrounding damage which can be many times the catalytic converter itself.
Okay.
But the cages do work.
All right, thank you. Okay, it doesn't seem, appear to be anyone else interested in providing additional comments for the council. With that, we'll close public comments and bring it up to the diocese for comments by the council. Let's start with Mr. Packard.
I'll take the first, I'm going to pass it on to the rest of you. Gary, on the, maybe Jared or maybe even Sean could speak on the forty-one unit on One Thirty-third Street. I believe they're still in the process, but there's a few things they got to tweak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Yeah, they're, they're still working on finalizing all the projects. We had to have a special building inspector go out there months back, and according to Jared, they passed all of that, but they still have outstanding conditions. They're still working on finalizing the road improvements, finishing the playground equipment downstairs, working on some final, finalization. Before I left the city, I sent them a list of outstanding conditions, and I emailed it to them, and I think I CC'd the former city manager, I think, other people as well. So he's still working through the punch list, is my understanding, and that also includes on, on the conditions for public works, also includes the subdivision map act requirement for refiling the map. Now, just keep in mind, I'll just bring this up because this has been brought up and asked by the mayor as well. The previous firm had did a memo on this, so, and this has happened previously, other developers have done this, they filed the condo map, and there's no requirement that they cannot, they, they don't have to sell it, but they just have to meet all their conditions of approval. So that's my understanding, that's what Mr. The applicant wants to deal with the property. I know he's pushed back on, on, because the map has expired, but it's still a condition of approval.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll pass it on.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody that came out and spoke. I did have a follow-up, so just to confirm, they're not required to sell, sorry, just trying to understand it completely. They're not required to sell it, but when, part of the discussion, I think, when it was approved, was some of the units were going to be low-income, so I do want to bring that up.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's a good point. So there's four units that are designated as affordable units, and they're required to, he did do an agreement, he hasn't finalized that, that's one of the holdups. And so, once he finals that, that agreement, then they have to do covenants, restrictive use covenants are placed on the property mitigating and mandating what the requirements are. I think one of the big issues of the, for the two-bedroom or one bath, don't quote me, but I think the median income adjusted may have gone up, was six hundred and ten dollars a month. So that's what he can only rent them out, and they're, and they're regulated at that, under a covenant. Obviously, one of the members of the public mentioned how we regulate it. Well, we regulate with the restriction, restrictive use covenant. We can go after them, and if they violate that, then we can violate that, those restrictions on that covenant and take action.
But there's no, it's only if it's reported that they're not, or do we actually verify, for example?
Well, yeah, they'd have to go through, we have to review all of their applicants that come in and make sure they meet the housing element, or the housing agreement that we'll be working with Mr. Murphy's office to finalize. So there, if there was any violations, then we could take a corrective action. And there are, those units are restrictive, and there's a whole other host of violations the state would come down on, since they're using state money, set asides, and taking advantage of the density bonus programs that were adopted that are state law.
Okay, okay. And then I did want to thank the librarian for coming. I did want to, I talked, touched briefly on, on Mr. Gould's comments about the metro walk, which we did do, and kind of mixed feelings about it because it didn't quite feel like we got that much information, and, and it kind of felt like the information changed a bit from what we were previously told. So I did want to clarify, though, is that we don't make the decision, ultimately does go to metro. I know that, I'm not quite sure what has been discussed in depth during the subcommittee meetings, but perhaps the mayor and Mayor Protem can give more insight on that, but, but I did, I, I have to say, the walks weren't too informative. I think it was very brief and general, and the thing I did notice was that there weren't a lot of residents that showed up. We seemed to get a lot of people from Torrance, Redondo Beach, so I was wondering how adequately they advertised the event, because it surprised me that the, that I didn't, especially for our group specifically, we only had one resident. In the two walks that I did in our specific group, one resident per walk, and so that just kind of surprised me. But with that, I'll pass it along. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Counselor McQuavis.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking. Do we have the traffic study that was requested a while ago for the Manhattan where RJ is at? Were we doing a traffic study for that? Did we talk about it already?
Could you be mayor, member of the council? Yes, study is being conducted right now. It should be coming back to the city in, within about two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle, thank you. I've been promoting the testing to the neighborhood, and hopefully, they're coming and getting tested there. I did see a couple of properties on the Airbnb, and I don't know how we could keep up on, going on their website and looking at that, especially that one violator that keeps putting her property on there. Could we form like a little task form, test?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'll talk to Michael Reyes and MSD, and we'll get him on that. They have, he has all kinds of ideas that they want to implement, they have a way to rent them out and go after them, and then do like sting operations, if you will.
Because I almost rented one for a family member, so that's why, that's how I know that we had a couple of.
We'll start on that. I'll talk to Mr. Reyes and his staff, and we'll get started on that.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Gould, we will be working with Metro, the subcommittee will dig in, and hopefully, we could work something out where everybody is happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Protem.
Thank you. Michelle, thank you again for keeping us posted as to what's going on over at the library. We do appreciate you, and we appreciate the time and the energy of you coming out to our meetings and for providing those COVID tests to our citizens, so thank you. I had a couple of questions, too, on the forty-two unit. You've covered quite a few of them and the low-income units, but if I remember right, and Gary, you might remember more so than me, when it came up to council, it was stated that they could not be sublet or sub-rented as well. And I'd like to make sure that we are all on the same page still as to what those agreements are. Those, we have at my house, the original paperwork that claims them to be condominiums, not apartments, in the original paperwork that the gentleman provided all of us residents here. And I still have the flyer at my house, sitting here, saying how wonderful they were. So I think that he needs to abide by the original agreement, even though there was a lot of people against him and wanting it here, I don't think we should let it slack. I think we need to, to be Johnny on the spot with it. As far as the RJ property is going, I too want to see that done and complete as soon as possible. That's pretty important, and if they're leaving that kind of a mess on the city, I want them build back for it. Why should, if the city is having to go up, and Julian would best be able to understand that, if it's a city that's having to clean up after them, there's a dollar amount attached to that. Randall, thank you, Gary, for bringing those items up. Randall, on your items, the short-term rentals, can we look at what we have in place right now for ordinances? Randall just quoted us that the first offense could be fifteen hundred, three thousand, and five thousand. I'd like to make sure we have that written down and that we are at the max. We've got to shut these things down. If Longdale says no, Longdale says no, and these are one of the things, just like fireworks, I believe, let's penalize them to the highest that we can. Jay, thank you for coming out and voicing. I will voice later some frustrations I have over hearing many different residents on the metro. I also would like to ask Greg, if Greg could maybe explain so that everybody understands that even though I'm sitting here and concerned about metro, I in no way have a vote when it comes to which direction or if metro goes. I am just like you, Jay, I can just be loud, but I have no say-so. And I would like our attorney to explain that.
Sure, just, just briefly, yes, when, when council members are on subcommittees like this, they're, they're representing the council as a whole, and they act in a role to essentially gather information and bring it back to the council as a whole, and if the council needs to take a vote on something or direct action, then it would be agendized here, but in the subcommittee role, there is no vote, so it's not generally an area where, where we would see a conflict of interest come up. If it's something that the council does want me to look into farther, I'm, I'm happy. If it's something that the council does want me to look into farther, I'm happy to, but as the Mayor Pro Tem said, it, it's a different role, the subcommittee or, or standing committee role, because you don't make decisions in that role, you just gather information, share thoughts, and then either come back to this body for a decision, or state to a body like Metro what the residents and what the city believes. So, yes, ma'am.
And the next piece of that, Jay, just so you know. I permanently do not want Metro through our city. It doesn't matter if it's coming down the row or down Hawthorne Boulevard, I don't want it, all right? So, it's not that I'm, have any feeling one way or the other, I just permanently don't want it. I don't like the, the look of Landale's future with it. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank, thank you. I will start with the Metro. First of all, I want to thank the Madam Mayor Pro Tem for, for bringing up the clarification on the subcommittee, and for the city attorney for clarifying the subcommittee, that it, that it is not a policy committee. So, we're not making policy for Metro or for the city, or even recommending policy, simply fact-finding, gathering, sharing thoughts, et cetera. And then, we share that with, with the body, if there's anything significant to share. But we're in no way making any decisions for the, for the city, when we have the Metro meetings. It's basically the same information, basically, that everyone else receives, except that we might receive it, what, a week or so before everyone else, or what have you? There's no, that's all it is, really, is informational. So, that's that with the subcommittee. I will say, just to, you know, everyone know I'm not a proponent of, of the Metro project, but I do like to clarify things, to keep clarity. Even when we disagree, like if I disagree with, with someone on our project, I still like to be clear on it, and, so, Mr. Gould, you mentioned about, about being a residential zone, a residential district, and yes, it is residential district. But to keep everything in perspective, Metro is a metropolitan planning organization with their own zoning authority. A lot of times, the zoning authority supersedes the city's zoning authority. So, whether it's a residential, commercial, light manufacturing, whatever the zoning is, they does not have, in most cases, my understanding, adhere to our zoning, and we cannot force them to adhere to the zoning, because they have those, these powers and authorities that's given to them by the legislature when they were formed, as a metropolitan planning organization. So, we, obviously, we wouldn't want a project through our residential areas, right? But at the end of the day, we wouldn't be able to say because we have zoning, they have to adhere to it. We, we experienced this when we had the, the project room key, with the county having their own authorities that can supersede the city's zoning in some instances, and where we didn't have the opportunity to stop the county from having not one, but two project room keys, because they have certain authorities that supersede even the city's zoning. So, I just wanted to clarify, clarify that, so, people won't think, oh, the city is just allowing them to build, you know, in the residential neighborhood. That's not, that's not the case, because we don't have the authority to prevent them from doing so. We can be loud, we can voice our opinions, we can rally folks, ask all the questions, and make sure that those environmental standards are, are here, too. We're looking forward to seeing the environmental impact report. We should answer a lot of the questions that people have posed, even on, on the walk. I'm getting some conflicting stories, it seemed like, and I'm not accusing Metro of anything, but it seemed like I received, my group received a certain information that was not necessarily the same information that groups that didn't have an elected official in, right? And so, we need to get those clarifications. But all of those centered around environmental elements that would be addressed in the environmental impact report. No matter what the story was when we, when we walked, it should be addressed in the environmental impact report. So, I'm looking forward to seeing that, that report is long due, so, whenever it comes out, we will react to it as a council, to the, to the point to whether or not we think they're satisfactory or need some work, or what have you. So, but thank you for bringing that up and participating. Mr. Gould, for being a citizen out there on this very important project, because I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say that, that Metro did not promote it. We had, we had a gentleman from Hawthorne there, right? And I know for a fact, I know several people that knew it was, the meeting was going, and I don't know if they attend on other days, but I don't think, well, they could have, but I didn't see them on the list, in terms of reservations or whatever. Maybe they came without, you know, reserving, or what have you. I don't know if it's just people are not, people are so busy, or they're just not choosing not to participate. Because I fairly expected far more people from there on a Saturday, nice weather, or nice enough weather, it was kind of chilly and windy, but nice enough weather, and we didn't, we didn't have that, that many people there. And I, I went on the row tour, and then for a little while, on Hawthorne with my wife, but people just need to come out and participate, because they did put the flyers out, they put them in the mailbox, you know? We got one, and I saw them on the neighbor's unboxes, and, you know? Sometimes, yeah, you miss a, you know, a house here and a house there, but I'm not really sure, how do we get people, induce people to come out, beyond the flyer that they receive, or what have you? So, maybe that's something, if anyone has some good ideas, that we can kind of look into. My next item is, Randall, Randall brought up the, the short-term rentals, thank you for that. He's around here somewhere, there he is. The short-term rentals, I, I would be interested, too, to see if we had the highest violations. It seems like we, we've looked at this before. To find him, that the highest is allowed, we allow, and I don't know where we are, maybe we're already there, I'm not sure if we've reached the cap, you know, or not. But you guys will look into it.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we'll look into that, and Mayor Pro Tem's comments as well.
Okay. Yeah, because the summer is coming up. The summer is coming up, so, we're going to look into that. And with that, I think that's all I have. Yes, sir.
Make one comment to Mr. Gould. I attended this Saturday meeting with four of the council, well, three of the council members, including myself and the mayor, and I took away from that meeting, is all they're doing is checking a box and crossing their Ts and dotting their Is. I think all our concerns fell on deaf ears. I believe we lost our leverage when we sold out to the four or five freeway. We had, that was our ace up our sleeve, and we sold out. We should never sold out and gave into Metro there, because then we had leverage to go on the, either row, Hawthorne Boulevard. Well, it's done, it's done, but I will fight, I don't want Landale, they're to go down Redondo, where the electric lines are going, there's to be electric, let them plug into those lines. But I will fight it to my dying day, Jay.
Absolutely. Okay, with that, we'll close, comments from the council, and we'll bring up, we'll move our agenda. We're now on item F, which is the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning item?
Mayor, I make a motion to accept the consent calendar as written, if there's no additions or subtractions.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion's been made by a county that we accept the consent calendar as is, and seconded by Cuevas. Is there any discussion on the motion? So, you know, would the council please vote on the consent calendar, including the mayor?
For the consent calendar, the motion passes with everyone voting.
Thank you, you didn't get me this time. Okay, next item is item seven, under administration. Yes, sir, I see someone at the podium, Finance Director. Audit of the twenty-twenty-one fireworks, financial statements.
Correct. Good evening, Mayor and honorable council members. Tonight, I'm here to discuss our, our audit program for the twenty-one fiscal year fireworks sales program. As part of this fireworks sales program, the Finance Department is required, under Landale's municipal code eight twelve, to review all participating organizations' financial information related to their sales of fireworks within the city, and to ensure that the participating entities were in compliance with the terms and conditions of their permits. The Landale Municipal Code eight twelve requires these nonprofit organizations to submit specific financial information to the city on or before September first of each year. This financial information includes an accounting of all proceeds from the sale of the fireworks, including copies of state and local and district sales tax use forms. In addition, these organizations are also required to submit, on or before November thirtieth of each year, an accounting of expenditures of funds showing that the net revenue earned from the sale of fireworks under any prior permit were spent in the manner required within the Landale Municipal Code, chapter eight twelve, point one, section A. We will audit two of the seven participants from the fireworks season. The city manager will randomly select two of the entities that were not audited in the prior year, so that eventually, we cycle through all of the nonprofits over time. The scope of the audits typically include the verification of all receipts, all disbursements, the verification of the beneficiary of nonprofit status, a review of the Part A financial revenue report, which generally includes, includes the list of names of the organizations, the address, contact information. It includes gross income, operating expenditure type of information. The other component is the financial expenditure report. This report reflects that the nonprofits spent the monies on youth and charitable activities in accordance with the requirements of the permit. On there. The city has received all the financial information required from all the nonprofit entities, excluding PRSSC, by the required dates. The city has conducted an audit of two of the entities in 2019. However, in fiscal year twenty, we did not conduct any audits due to COVID-19 and staff shortages. The Finance Department will be performing an audit of two of the nonprofit organizations that have participated in the twenty-one calendar year fireworks program, based on this random selection process. So, this report is really just for receiving and file. And if council has any, any questions.
Okay, any questions on the report?
Not of the report, but I have a question on the list of people, of organizations.
Okay, ask that, I'm not.
Let's see if that's relevant to the report.
Sorry, sorry, I jumped.
Okay, there you go.
That's the next report.
So, at this point, without objections, we're receiving file on this report. You want to speak on it? Okay, yes, sir. Step, step on up. That's for the public on this side, before we receive it.
Good evening. The claim is made that fireworks sales provides funding for youth groups in Landale, yet surrounding cities seem to manage quite well using alternative fundraising. The municipal code requires that the city annually audit these groups who allege fireworks sales as principal methods of funding. Unfortunately, as the information provided to me shows, the city has been delinquent in these audits, and leaves a lot to be desired in accountability. On February twenty-fourth, I submitted a public records request for audits conducted for the four years prior to 2021, as has already advised, and no audit was conducted during 2021. The documents that were provided for 2016 to 2019 are not audits, but summaries of the fireworks revenue and expenses. These are similar to what I prepared over the years to compare sales and revenues of fireworks. One of the records is an email from the former Finance Director that comments there was no audit conducted for 2018, and no records demonstrate that anything has ever been looked at. The same email states all files prior to 2017 were destroyed. If so, this might have been in violation of these record retention requirements. The email indicates that the plan was to audit two entities later in 2019, but if this so, this was not provided as part of my public records request. After reading tonight's staff report indicating that an audit was conducted in 2019, last week, I asked the interim Finance Director to provide me a copy. At this point, there is no documentation that any audits were ever conducted. The purpose of these audits is to show that the nonprofit organizations spent the funds according to the municipal code, and to allow cities to verify that the organization uses sales proceeds in the manner required by section eight point two oh five oh of this chapter. I would think the intent of this audit is also to verify any inconsistencies before the fireworks stand allowances are given out. The code requires that a minimum of two groups shall be audited, but the failure to adhere to this requirement after all these years means that for 2021, at least, half of the groups, if not all, should be audited. Although, although the code specifically requires a minimum, it does not prevent the city to audit more, if not all, organizations. The financial forms that the organization complete allow for vague responses. These need to be revised, so these nonprofits fill in sections that show exactly how the percent of funds were spent, at least twenty-five percent for youth groups within the city, and a total of fifty percent for charitable projects within the city. For years, residents have been told how essential these sales are for the community. However, with a lack of any accountability, it is unknown how these funds are actually spent. The results of these audits should be presented to the City Council before any fireworks stands are authorized. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Unless anyone have any comments?
I do, I'm sorry. Yes, on this item. Could we, if we do have the 2019 audits, could we also get copies of that, so we could see what, what's on them? And I personally would like to see audits prior to us allowing new stands or additional licensing.
Sure, we, we can, so, a lot of this information is from these nonprofits, and it's, I don't know if the information can be disclosed publicly. I would kind of defer to the city attorney on that.
We would have to take a look, but in terms of getting it to the City Council for their review, why don't we take a look at that this week, and see what, what we can do in that regard?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
If it is allowed, I would like to see us go back further than 2019, so that we can see several, I, I don't know how many years back I want to go, but at least so that I have seen every single one of them once.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Is that three years, is it, if we have six, three, four years back, so, 2015-ish?
Right, what I would do is I would go back through the records, and, and look at all the audit records that we have, and put together a schedule for the, the council.
And then, just as the gentleman mentioned, that would be based on records still in the possession of the Finance Department. This is the first I've heard about whether records were destroyed, and I'm sure if they were destroyed, it was with permission of the City Clerk's Office and the then-City Attorney's Office. I don't think that they were done improperly, but it may just be that older records are missing, so we would need to go look at that. But yes, we can get you whatever we have.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank, thank you. Okay, with that, without objections, we're receiving file this item. Okay, let's move on to item eight, is the 2022 fireworks permits.
So, Honorable Mayor and Council, this is the follow-up after the audits. So, in accordance with the municipal code, we, that we're allowed up to eight permits to be issued on an annual basis, per the City Council, I'm sorry, per the City Council, for any of these organizations incorporated within the city limits between June, to, to sell fireworks between June twenty-eighth and July fourth. The permits are issued to nonprofit, community, and youth-based organizations subject to the specific applications, permit, license, review, inspection, insurance, and record-keeping requirements. In addition, Parks and Recreation Social Services Commission, or PRSSC, is allowed to participate in the fireworks sale, but is not counted as part of the eight permitted, or allowed permitted organizations to participate in the fireworks sales program. Seven organizations, including the PRSSC, met our February fifteenth deadline for, for application deadline. Six of the seven nonprofit, nonprofit, community, and youth-based organizations have previously participated in the Landale fireworks sales program. Landale Four-Square Church is applying for the first time. All are classified within the California Secretary of State as domestic nonprofit organizations, and are in good standing, and being recommended for conditional approval. The following, the following are the recommended applicants. Christian Heritage Church, Landale Chamber of Commerce, Landale Little League, Landale Rotary Club, the PRSSC, Wesley. Rotary Club, the PRSSC, Wesley Church of Landale, Landale Foursquare Church. The staff is recommending that the city council award seven conditional permits to Christian Heritage Church, Landale Chamber of Commerce, Landale Little League, Landale Rotary Club, PRSSC, Wesley Church of Landale, and Landale Foursquare Church. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. I have a question, does anyone else have a question? Yes, let's do this one.
It's just clarification. When it says "good standing," do you go on the Secretary of State, or do you request specifically from the entity their proof of the good standing certificate?
We generally require it from the organization, but we also cross-reference it with the state.
Okay.
On a go-forward basis, so I can't speak too historical.
Okay, do you know, because I think they timestamp them usually when you ask, do you know what the timeframe for accepting?
No, I apologize, off the top of my head, I do not. But I can't look into that.
Thank you.
Shirley, Ms. Quavis.
I just, my question is with regards to the Chamber of Commerce. What do they do for the children, or, I mean, I haven't seen them around, so why are we allowing them to have a license if they haven't been around or giving us a report?
I'm sorry, which organization were you referring to?
The Chamber of Commerce.
The Chamber of Commerce. So, if, if one of the nonprofit, one of the entities has not given us a complete packet or has complied with our requirements, we will not recommend them moving forward.
And, and as the council knows, the mayor, once they file their application from the beginning of January and they go through that process, they're set in motion to move forward. So they've apparently, based on finance and community development, working with the applicants, they've fulfilled their requirements and moved forward, under our ordinance.
Is there a way I could see the paperwork prior to me voting on this? Because I've been in Landale for a long time, and we had Farmers Market, I would say, six years ago, and that's all I knew about chambers of commerce. So I want to see what they're putting on paper that qualifies them to be part of this.
If the council wants to continue this item, we can bring it back and attach the applications and all the requirements. The staff have reviewed their applications, they've met all the minimum requirements pursuant to our zoning code. I'm sorry, to the fireworks requirements.
Okay. And then, where is the Landale Foursquare Church?
I can answer that question, if you'll make. It is now, it's a Spanish church now, the title's wrong here, they've changed the name. It's on 154th between Fremona and Manziel. It is the 14561, I believe, 154th Street. I know the lady's name on the application is correct, but the church is not the Landale Foursquare.
Okay.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, is it a different church?
It's a Spanish church now.
Same building?
Yeah.
Well, I'm just concerned if it's a, if it's a different church and just in the same building, then why are they using Landale Foursquare Church? Because oftentimes this happens, you have a building.
Sure.
And you lease it out to a church. The church may outgrow it and move somewhere else, so you lease it out to another church. So I'm just wondering, is this the same church? Because if it's not, then that means the Landale Foursquare Church is not.
Non-existent.
An existing church.
Right. We can, we can definitely look into this.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, if you'd like, we can continue this item for two weeks, and then staff can bring back the applications, all the things that they filed, and then verify this specific church, Landale Foursquare.
And, and unless Landale Foursquare Church is a DBA, or the church does not exist, is a DBA, and this is their corporate name, then I don't understand why they have Landale Foursquare Church if it's not Landale Foursquare Church. We got to get some clarification on that. Also, Councilman McQuavis kind of brought this up, but I think what you're looking for is to make sure that organizations are not just organizations in name only. Because you can, you can help comply with the paperwork and have a good standing at the Secretary of State office. All they require you to do is pay your fees, whatever that happens to be, and your little form you got to fill out every year, and you're in compliance, far as the Secretary of State is concerned, you know, once you're, you know, incorporated and all that kind of stuff and have your paperwork in. That's all it takes for being in compliance with the Secretary of State. But we're looking for, to make sure that these organizations are active organizations in the city, not just, you know, having that paperwork a holding company, if you will, they're not a holding company, but you get the gist of what I'm saying. So I think we need to make sure we have in our policies that, that they have to demonstrate that they're active in the city, you know, whoever they may happen to be, you know, whether it's a church, because you can have a church in name only.
Correct.
You know, it still can be there, and it could be one or two people over the church, and it's not really functioning as a church. Oh, there's a whole bunch of those, right? Right? And, but if they're not having services and they're not outreach into the community, then they're not eligible. I'm not saying that to Landale Foursquare because they have no idea who they are. But in general, we should have a policy that state that we need to verify that they're active, you know, in the city, not just name only. Yes, ma'am?
I think the mayor brings up a great point. Perhaps as part of the research, we could do like references and people that can confirm, you know, that there's meetings being held regularly, services that are being held regularly, and such, stuff like that, so we can confirm, okay, this is an active organization.
Thank you. And that's all I have on this. So without any objections, you got something?
I have one up. I'm picking back on the ladies. Yeah, they, you can have a meeting of two people, and that doesn't represent a functioning entity that we have given fireworks booth to. We need to know if they're going out, like Birdit says, you know, walking door to door, handing out masks, handing out food, or, and, well, I'm heckling a random chamber. Are they doing mixers like they're supposed to be doing? Are they doing grand openings, ribbon-cut ceremonies? I mean, I could have, I could get a number. I think Santa Slay has a number.
Correct.
And we can come up and get a fireworks booth.
Right.
But we only function three months of the year.
So, one of the things, one of the forms that we refer to is a Financial Expenditure Report, which is part of the check, Part B. What that form has to do is it has to list out the types of expenditures that they have spent within the community to demonstrate that they've spent this money on youth programs or other charitable activities to meet that 50% total threshold. So, we always have those documents, and those are part of the documents that are reviewed. But, speaking to Councilwoman McQuavis' comment about, you know, are they, what are they really doing? That is something far beyond the scope of just our process in terms of auditing them. In other words, we're not doing a forensic audit of them. We're looking at their, their, their records. Are their records materially representing what they've stated? And that's what we're looking at for this.
But John, council will, if the council wants to entertain us, we can, staff can bring this back and do some background check on these items and the two organizations that were brought up, and then report back to you, if that's what the council wishes to do. Notwithstanding Mr. Downs' comments, we can go back and double-check the Foursquare and definitely the, the Chamber of Commerce, because I don't know how active they are, if that's what the wishes of the council.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that would be the, the direction of the council. And then, moving forth for a policy to make sure that the organizations are actively involved. I mean, I know they, they have to give account of the monies, but giving account of the monies could simply mean, yeah, I got this pot of money, and I got to give it, give it out accordingly to, you know, to the rules, but that's not the business that you're engaged in, you're not engaged, you should be, this is in addition to, this is like a program of, if you get, if you get a booth, that would just be your program, but it can't be, this is all I did all year.
Right.
For the last two years, three years, five years, or whatever it happened to be.
Mr. Mayor, would you, the council wanting an update to the fireworks ordinance or a policy? Just so I'm clear. Because we have specific requirements and ordinance, so we can do either one. Would you want us to bring back something later after, obviously to be after the timeframe?
Well, let's take a look at it. I mean, it, it should be an ordinance, I would imagine.
Right, because we have a regulation, okay.
I mean, because we want to make sure they're not just a name only.
The other thing I'd like to point out is, so when we're, when we're, when we're going through this audit process, this is after the fact. So Foursquare being a new organization, we don't have any of that type of information until after the fact.
I can appreciate that, I'm not focusing on the audit report that Quavis and some other members was focused on the audit, and I'm just focusing on being an active organization.
Sure.
Okay, so that would be the, the pleasure of the council. Thank you for that report. Next item on the agenda is item nine, is the denial of an appeals requested from the, a denial of decision, let me say it again, is denial of appeal request, appeal in the Planning Commission decision denying the development of a car wash. Let's have a report.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, Jared Chavez, the acting director of community development is going to provide the report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members, Jared Chavez, Community Development Department. This is a denial of appeal request, case number 2125. As heard on the February 22nd city council meeting, public hearing held last February 22nd, the city council made a final decision and decided to opt to deny the project as presented. Now, staff is recommending that you adopt the resolution attached, number CC2203-012, denying the appeal for case number 2117, a special use permit and development permit requesting to develop an express car wash facility. And that concludes staff report.
Okay, thank you for that staff report. Are there any questions of the report? I see Councilwoman McQuavis. Yeah, oh, no, okay.
I go.
Any questions of the, of the report?
So we just, just want to be certain that the council fully understands, a yes vote on the resolution means the project is denied. A no vote means.
I know.
You were in favor of the project. Just want to be sure everybody's clear so that we.
No, that's, that's good clarification. Yes, that's good clarification. Thank you for that.
It's always fun to bring these back, let me tell you.
I almost voted against myself. Okay, so what is the pleasure of this?
I'll make a motion to go staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
So the motion's been made, made by Mr. Pat Kearney, Councilman Kearney, that we go with staff recommendations concerning the denial of the appeal, and, and seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Hoffman-Gorman. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Now, a yes is a no, and a no is a yes, okay? Is that correct?
Hey, I wrote it down, so I won't be confused.
Okay, that's why I know. Okay, I got it.
For item number nine, it passes with three yes votes and two no's.
Thank you, City Clerk. Okay, item 10 is the Hurley-Hoffman Community Center concerning the reopening. Let's have a staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Yes, I am here to present the Hurley-Hoffman Community Center reopening considerations. Just a brief background, the community center has been closed since March 17th, 2020, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and city council made that decision on Monday night, March 16th, 2020, and the community center has been closed ever since. During the closure, which is nearing two years now, there's been a number of important elements that, that don't work any longer. There's three of them, some are vital, some are not as vital, but all three are very important. And actually, only two out of three are actually regarding broken items. But our HVAC system needs some work, it quit working several months ago, it's had problems in the past for several years, it finally gave out. So, that's something that absolutely 100% needs to be repaired before we open. In fact, LA County has suggested that cities and municipal buildings provide additional ventilation systems and whatnot to help with infection control, which isn't the case here, but this system definitely needs to be operational before we open up the community center so it provides the heating and the cooling necessary to make it a comfortable facility. The second is the touchless main entrance doors. We were included in this project way, way back, but for some reason it didn't happen. This is also an infection control item, and it also, because it's touchless, obviously, this is for the main, the two double doors facing Bearden Avenue on the first level, where most of our traffic comes through. Once we do enter, we'll probably only have one area of entrance to there, but people don't have to touch doorknobs, pushbars, door frames, whatever it is, they just walk in and out, the doors open automatically. So that's something that we see as vital. The reason why that is vital is not because we definitely have to have them and people could come in or not, but the doors have been failing for quite some time. I'm regularly sending work order requests to Public Works Department to repair the doors. They have been used heavily, the community center just is in excess of 10 years old now, 10 years old now, and the doors are getting to the point where they can't be repaired. So, this is more of a situation where something is just worn out instead of broken. But this is, like I said, a very important infection control item. And the third item I want to talk about is, you know, we've been closed for, for almost two years now, and Public Works comes through and they do their cleaning and whatnot, but when things don't get used, sometimes they freeze up, but there's been a lot of dust, a lot of things that, over the 10-year span that the community center has been open that haven't been cleaned, there's areas that are high up in the community center that are accumulating dust, things that staff can't get to. So, I'm suggesting as part of this, a deep cleaning and sanitization of the entire community center. Those are the three things, and there are a couple other things in the staff report that I'll answer on a case-by-case basis if anybody wants to dig into it, but those would be after we open, things such as onsite security services, full-time staff, and then replacement eventually of our main event room audio and visual system. But like I said, I'll hold off on that unless there are specific questions regarding that. In terms of cost estimates, what we're looking at for the HVAC is repair of heating coils, replacement of the heating coils, which allows the unit to, to heat, obviously, as the name suggests. But eventually, we've been told eventually the entire system will need to be replaced, but we're taking the shortcut right now, let's do the short-term Band-Aid, so we can get the community center open and we get the, the building heated and cooled, and cooled properly. So we are suggesting only a replacement of the heating coils, which is estimated to be about $45,000 within eight to 10 week turnaround, and that's if everything goes well with the supply chain, you know, how the supply chain is right now. So we're saying July 1st as an opening date because we think we can have all this work done by June. That's probably the biggest item. The touchless main event, touchless main entrance doors, estimated cost is about $30,000 for those, similar to what the other departments got some time ago. The estimated turnaround for that is six to eight weeks, parts delivery, installation, all that stuff. And the third one, as I mentioned before, the deep cleaning and sanitization, I'm still gathering quotes, but a good ballpark estimate is going to be about $15,000 for that, and that's virtually cleaning every, every inch of the community center, almost going all the way up to the roof, as well as carpet professionally cleaned, and just all the bells and whistles. So, that is a total cost of $90,000. We are suggesting that ARPA funding could be used, American Rescue Plan Act funding, that's federal funding. I believe we have a nice, healthy allotment of that, which is in the staff report as well, but as it pertains to legal review, we ran this through Mr. Murphy in his office twice just to make sure everything is up and up, and we can use this type of funding for these because the nexus here, the link here is, they're COVID-type items, infection control, things like that. So, there was some recent changing in ARPA funding in January, but Mr. Murphy has cleared that as well, so we're on really solid footing if we, if you folks want to approve the use of ARPA funding. The recommendation from staff is as follows. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the use of approximately $90,000 in federal American Rescue Plan Act funding for the items in the cost estimates and turnaround times. in federal American Rescue Plan Act funding for the items in the cost estimates and turnaround times repair slash replace in items table. So everything is there in the staff report. Obviously, we could make this presentation much longer, but I'm just trying to give you what you folks need to make the decision. And staff is available for any questions pertaining to this report.
I appreciate that, a brief staff report. Thank you.
I have questions. On the HVAC, Michael, what's the warranty? Is it almost done?
Warranty was one year expired long, long ago.
Okay, would it be cheaper to buy a new one, to put in a Band-Aid on a bleeding artery?
The new one is projected to be four to $500,000. It's a very expensive unit.
You said we got a hefty lump sum in the American, did you say what it's called?
ARPA funding. Yes, I believe we have 7.8 million in total.
Well, I'd like to see, you know, I'm not going to, why put a Band-Aid on an artery when you buy a new thing on that one? And I thought the touchless door was supposed to be done when we did the rest of the doors. I know, I'm not knocking Muslim Services, but they got touchless doors on both sides. We have touchless doors here. I believe Public Works had touchless door. Why didn't Community Center get a touchless door? Even though it wasn't open, it should have been done at the same time.
I'll turn it over to Public Works.
That's second question. As far as the cleaning, I'm okay with that. And they're going to bring the rest of the stuff back later on, correct? Michael?
Yes, some of this stuff will happen after opening.
Yeah, okay, like staffing and all that.
Exactly.
Okay.
So we're gearing the staffing and whatnot towards July 1st recruitment date or after the budget is approved, full-time staffing in place possibly in September.
In fact, we'll add some additional information on the HVAC. It's not just the cost of $400,000, $500,000 for the HVAC unit. It's the time of installation. It's a big unit. We do need to prepare specifications. And I don't know whether it's just going to be a simple replacement or modification. Those plans and specs and installation has to be taken place and that's going to be more of 12 to 18 monthly time. So because of the urgency of opening the community center, we talked to Mike and we talked to Sean about doing the coil just in place. And again, the HVAC, the HVAC unit is in a good shape if we just replace the coil. It will last us another, I'll say, four to five years if the coil doesn't fail. Now, so the second question as far as the automated door, the reason that we didn't replace the door was because of the cost. Now, in order for the automated door to, to be installed, you need electrical power. The, as far as community center, they don't have electrical power in the front. They only have in the back. So to pull the electrical conduit from the back to the front, it was a too, too high of a cost to be part of the last ARPA fund to do the automated door. So that's the reason why we did the three facilities and we skipped the, the community center.
I remember when we did the, this roof here, we kept putting Band-Aids on and Band-Aids on and keep breaking. Robert, you know that, up here. And eventually we bought a new one. You know, I know time, if timeframe it restraints, but I'd rather have the community center 100% than keep putting Band-Aids on something that's broken. My opinion, we should buy the new one and whatever time it takes to put it in, then we reopen after that. Because I don't want to have people on there doing gymnastics or dance or seniors like myself doing lunch and I pass out because it's too hot. I would have it done right the first time. That's just my opinion. I'll pass it on back to you, Mark.
Yes, Mayor. Quavis?
Do the ARPA funds expire or do we have a timeframe to use those funds?
I think it's in the staff report. There's a timeframe by next year. Is that correct, Mike?
I'm not an expert on RAPA funding and I don't think that's in the staff report, but I'd like to invite interim finance director John Downs up to.
I know John and I have talked about it. There's limitations.
So with respect to the ARPA funds, there was a major change that took place in January that really is allowing us to use these monies. The fundamental change that took place was the way that the city can calculate revenue losses. And, and I equate it to thinking of a standard deduction on a tax return versus an itemized. So before January, you had to calculate what your revenue losses were for the last, basically since 1516. It's a very elaborate calculation in making that determination. There are certain factors that go into it. In January, the Department of Treasury revised their requirements and said you can choose a standard $10 million allowance for your revenue loss or up to that amount. So for example, this city, we have an allocation of 7.8 million dollars basically for ARPA money. That means the entire $10 million can fall under this categorization. That categorization provides you with the greatest flexibility to spend this money. So I would almost equate it to think of it as spending it as normal general fund money. There is, there is virtually no restrictions on it as long as it's under governmental services on there. That change has really kind of opened up the use of these funds. Where in, in, before that, not only this city, but almost any other city was struggling in, in terms of how they were going to utilize their ARPA monies. So this was a major change on the Department of the U.S. Treasury. And because of that, we now have the ability to use it for the community center, for the heating or other major projects like that. And we plan on going through with the, our 2223 budget, incorporating those funds into the budget based on council priorities in our normal budgetary process.
John, is there, there's a time constraint?
There is a time constraint. We have to, we have to basically spend the money by the end of '24.
So yes, to, to, to be sort of specific, the funds have to be obligated. So you have to have contracts in place by the end of 2024. The actual expenditures have to happen by the end of 2026. So there is some time. And as Mr. Downs said, the money can be used for general governmental purposes because you're replacing what the federal government is considering lost revenue. So all of this is covered and, and you do have time. If it's the will of the council, you don't have to rush and have those in place in the next five to six months.
Thank you.
One more question.
Yes, ma'am.
You said that the new AC, HVAC would take almost a year to get or was it weeks?
Yeah, it will be about 12 to 18 months due to the preparation of the requirements for the construction and the design and, and actual work of the, of the replacement of the unit. And this doesn't include the, of course, the delays and the, all the parts and all the units.
It said months.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I just want to point out, we also, when we replaced the city hall AC units and all the, if the council recalls, of course, it's the will of the council, which you want to do. But we had significant issues with that later after it was installed and we were having heating and cooling issues. So, but it's up to you guys.
That's the reason why that it does need to go through the design and the planning process to make sure that the HVAC unit is, is, it matches with the community center. And because of that design and the planning process, that it is going to take about a year, year and a half.
I do want to see the community center open, but I also want a new system out there. So if we have a timing for '24, maybe do the Band-Aid and then allocate those funds for a new system. And we have two years to work on the plan and whatever is required.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, we definitely need to, I mean, because I was disappointed that the, I, I don't know anything about HVACs, but it seemed like we did not get our money's worth at all from that HVAC system. If you're talking, it sounded like I, I heard the, the number of eight years, something like that. And, or 10. I mean, I know how old the community center is, but it started failing a few years ago. You know, and like, how does that, I mean, I thought a system like that was, not being an expert or anything, was like, maybe like a 20-year life before it started, you know, failing or whatever. But it started failing within eight years or so, like, and then there was no parts. It was, it was an issue where there was, some of the parts was discontinued. You know, it's like, how does that work? I mean, I don't know if, so I guess when we, when we do buy the HVAC, I would hope that we buy a system and we can predict if there's going to be enough supply for replacement parts. Because if you got one part that's missing and you can't get it replaced, then it could render the whole thing, you know, non-operational. And that's what happens in this case. There was, you know, some parts, at least that's what I was told, that you could no longer get. I'm like, wait a minute, it's only eight years, it's only eight years ago.
And, and it might speak to, it might be worth it to invest a little more money if in the long run, it's going to lead to more availability of those supplies and pieces. So something to think about.
I'm sorry, if I could just add one more thing. One other thing that I found out was that, yes, it is important to get the right unit in there. But one other thing that I see is that we also didn't do proper maintenance on all our HVAC units. So those, maintenance of that has to be done and those will be the costs that we will incur during the year. So if we are investing that much money on HVAC, it is important that we follow up with the maintenance program. And I see that in the past that we didn't do that. So those are some of the things that we definitely need to do in the future.
So the maintenance would be through some type of service agreement with, not staff, right?
Correct, no. We do need an expert on HVAC to come in, like cars. I mean, we do have oil changes and services every six months, a year. We definitely need to do that in HVAC so that we take care of minor issues before it becomes a bigger issue. Sorry for that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just, a lot of people believe that the system was, was underdesigned for that size of building. And we've talked to the architect about it and gone way, way back in the history of it. But that's possibly what it was. I don't think it was a faulty unit. I just think it was undersized for that, for 41,000 square feet.
Yeah, it was a four-cylinder when it should have been a six-cylinder, is what you're saying.
An eight.
You blew the engine. You blew a rod, you know, basically. Okay, with that, so what do we need to do with this item? We need to approve the expenditure of the $90,000? And with the understanding that we're going to allocate this money for to buy the, a new system? All right, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
I'll second.
So the motion's been made that, that we accept the staff recommendation of authorizing the $90,000 expenditures for the repairs of the HVAC and other related at the community center.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
CNN, would the council please vote?
For item number 10, motion passes again.
Thank you. Next item, Longdale Beet Fixed Route Contractual Status Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. We're here to assess the Longdale Fixed Route Transportation Contractual Status Report. The Longdale Beet was suspended back on May 4th, 2020. Generally, it was suspended due to low ridership and partially related to the pandemic. But you can see in my table on page two that ridership was declining a certain percentage before that time. Why does ridership decline? Generally, the ridership is low when gas prices are low because people drive. When gas prices are high, then, you know, people will ride. So there's many reasons why the ridership would have been low, but that, the ridership was low prior to the pandemic. So I think the pandemic was just kind of like the nail in the coffin which caused the suspension. The contract term for the Longdale Beet is a three-year contract plus two one-year extensions. Okay, so the, our third year ends June 30th of this year, 2020. Then we have two options, two one-year options that absolutely need to be exercised by the city if the city wants to entertain those options. And that can be, that can happen through writing from the city and the options are at the sole, the city's sole discretion. So if the contractor comes back and says, you know, we got another year, we want to go, we have the right of first refusal to say no. So that's the issue right there. The schedule of compensation makes it clear that in order us, in order for us to exercise either option year, we have to notify the contractor in writing approximately 120 days before. And we are just under that 120 days, but I've spoken to the contractor. They're fine with our decision if it comes, even in the next few days, if you folks decide that you want to exercise that fourth year option. So once again, if we want to go with the fifth year option, then the process will be the same. So that's why this is kind of a time-sensitive issue is because we need to let the contractor know which way we're going. When the system was suspended back in May of 2020, there were a lot of discussions. And one of the discussions were when it comes back, maybe it comes back as a one-bus, one-bus system instead of a two-bus system. Right now, the Longdale Beet is a two-bus system, express route and residential. It was suggested that maybe we retire the express and keep the residential because there are other transportation options on the boulevard. So that's basically a decision we're going to have to make here tonight is do we want to bring it at full? Do we want to bring it partial or just want to let it go? The fiscal impact, and this is on existing numbers and past numbers that we've done research on, if we were to bring back the system. And what, and what I did fail to mention, that I'll mention right now, is this is 100% Prop A funding. Okay, this is no city dollars. The only city dollars that go into this is staff to oversee the system. So it's all 100% Prop A funding. We're not going to lose the money in case we decide to not bring the Longdale Beet back. Those dollars can be used somewhere else. But I'll just say that Prop A funding is very difficult to use because it has to be for transportation. I mean, there are things that we can do if you have questions about that. You know, we can give you list of, list of things you can do, such as bus stop maintenance, contract to clean the bus stops, whatever it may be. But it is 100% of Prop A funded. So a full return of the system would be 491 approximately because the contract does say that we renegotiate a new rate if we come back for year four and/or year five. But the full return is about $491,000 as it is right now, although we're not paying it because the system is suspended in Prop A dollars. A 50% return would be approximately $295, last check, which was several months ago. But once again, we would renegotiate those rates if council wants to see the Longdale Beet come back. That basically condenses the report. The stack recommendation provides four options and staff recommends that the city council consider one of the following options. Number one, authorize the full system to return beginning July 1st, 2022, which would be the start of the fourth year. And direct staff to negotiate an amendment to contract service agreement for the Longdale Beet Fixed Route Transportation Services to exercise the first one-year option. Two would be to authorize the return of the system, same terminology, but at a 50% level, meaning retiring one of the, one of the routes, either the express or the residential. Number three is to authorize the termination of the service by letting the agreement naturally expire on June 30th, 2022, which doesn't require any writing. I mean, I would give them the benefit, I would give them the courtesy to email them and say, hey, we're not coming back right now and to let the contractor know. Or number four is to provide further direction. That concludes my report. And I'd like to pass this back up to the dais so you folks can discuss and I can, I'll answer whatever I can for you.
Okay, thank you for that report. Any discussion on this item?
I have questions, of course. Michael, you said that the ridership went, it was down in 2019, 2020. How many calls have you gotten within the last year about Longdale Beet?
I'm averaging maybe one or two calls a month. Most of them is like, hey, when is it coming back, things like that.
That's my lead. So if we decide to terminate the contract, let it expire in 2022, June, 2022, we can bring it back after the community center opens, correct? Because a lot of the rides were from here to doctors to whatever. How about our little bus right now that our Rashonda drives? Do we have a lot of ridership on that?
No, but it's building as we come out of the pandemic and as we do additional advertising. Yeah, we're averaging maybe a handful of rides a week right now.
So my suggestion, only my suggestion, of course, is we let the contract expire because the community center won't open until September, maybe October, correct?
We're looking at July 1st.
Are you?
A limited opening on July 1st and then building each quarter thereafter.
Okay, well, I still think we should let it lapse till we get it fully open. Because if you only get one or two calls a day, why are we going to pay for an extra year? Well, let's see, this is March, April, May, June, July, six more months and no ridership. So my recommendation to the council is we let it expire and bring it back once we become 100% open with the community center.
Well, let, go ahead.
I have, I want clarification on the Prop A funds and, for example, when do they expire? Is it you just use it or? I have clar, uh, I want clarification on the Prop A funds and, for example, when do they expire? Is it you just use it or lose it, or?
We don't lose the funds, we just have to find a way to spend it. I don't know how long the clock will, will run on those. I'd like to invite, uh, interim finance director John Downs up again. He's done a lot of research on Prop A funds, but we're not going to lose the funds. We would just be forced to use them in another way. This is a lot of money to use on cleaning bus stops and changing tires on vehicles and stuff like that.
Because that's just part of the concern is if we have the funds and forced to use them, we got to be creative about actually using them otherwise.
Yes, there, there is a time limit, but it's a fairly generous time limit. So we have no, there's no urgency that if we, if we don't move forward with the, the bus contract next year that we're going to lose the funds. A lot of cities, uh, sell the funds to other agencies at some exchange rate. Um, so that's always an option as well because they're very, they're highly restricted monies. They're, they're hard to spend. I, I know, um, I, I used to sell Palace Forty's Estates, uh, Prop A money to the city of Torrance because they had a large bus transit system. Uh, other cities do the same, um, on there. If you're not using the money, that's usually the best option, but it's one option.
We have time, it sounds like.
We do have time.
Specifically, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we do have time.
Can we get, um, because I'm not really familiar with this Prop A, can we get a list of all the many different things that it can be spent on?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
Be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I know Mr. Downs will get you that. Before you get the list, just think about it as anything dealing with transportation except the actual roads. It's kind of, he'll, he'll get you the specific list, but that's kind of a good mental starting point.
Ms. Quavis?
I, I would like to see number two, item number, or number two, go do the residential route. And not the, uh, express route. I know that there, people are starting to leave their cars behind because the gas is almost six fifty right now. So they're going to start using public trans. Um, and the residential will be better for us right now.
Oh, thank you. So I was looking at the residential, um, two as well, only because, um, I, I know we said that the, you've only received like one or two calls, but that's might be indicative of people know that the system, you know, is no longer, you know, um, um, working or in operation, so therefore they're not, not calling because that's probably something you probably, a call you probably would have made some months ago or a year ago or what have you, and you're probably not calling again because you know it's not, not running. So I don't know if that's necessarily indicative of the demand that we perhaps could have once we started. You know, um, so I don't want to dismiss it just only because two people, two or three people a week, you know, call, when the others may feel there's no need to call. I already know it's not, it's not, um, operating. I would favor, um, you know, the, the residential route, you go in within the residential, picking up folks, and then you can bring them to the, the major, corridors, you know, Hough the one or wherever they, um, they meet at or what have you, instead of having the other one, the, the full, um, route. Because like you said, there's already bus services that operates that. So I would be in favor of, in favor of two myself. I think you're right. Um, well, I know you're right now. I mean, I don't know if it would be the case, um, um, two weeks ago. But now that the war is on, um, it's definitely the cases with these, um, the gasoline prices. I think this would probably could provide some relief for, um, some families to at least bring them to the main corridor. And then they jump on metro or what have you. So I would be in favor of that, two.
Is there also the, so I'm trying to think of the other half, if we go halfway and do just the residential, then we could probably use some of the money for cleaning the buses and just making sure they're, I don't know if that's an option, to make sure they're, they're maintained very well. That way people feel comfortable using them, especially with, you know, people, the germs and all, and there's like this, this feeling that you really don't want to touch anything. So I don't know if that's something that you could partially invest some of those funds into just making sure the buses are maintained or something of that nature.
That's actually a contractor responsibility.
Okay.
It's in the contract, so.
Well, even like the bus stops and all.
We've, we've talked about, uh, redoing the bus shelters in the city, uh, in the past, and that discussion still keeps, keeps going. So, I mean, we're talking about doing some things, but they're hard funds to spend, you know, especially when we don't, if they were our buses and not contractor-owned, it'd be easy to spend because we could spend it on the buses themselves. But, uh, that's just one project we've talked about.
And, and then just on a personal note, I, I really, I mean, you know, it's, it's sad, but I really love those buses. It just brings back, this is just more of a personal thing, but it's nice to see the Longdale Beat, the logo passing by and all that. And it's just, it just, for me, it, it kind of brings me joy when I see it and memories of riding it myself, so.
Very good. We don't want to deprive you of those, that joy. So, okay, is there any further discussion on, on this item?
Yes. I do. So we, we extend it for one year. We see that next year, the ridership is low, we could cancel the fifth year.
Oh, definitely.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Two separate one-year agreements. They're both independent, yeah.
And this one year is going to cost us two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, is that correct?
That was the quote that I got after we discussed, uh, you know, what it would cost to go down to one route. Uh, it'll be negotiated. Obviously, we'll get it as low as we can, but that's probably, uh, I would say within maybe ten or twenty percent.
Okay.
Okay, so I entertain a, a motion on this item.
I want to let the ladies talk.
I'll make the motion that we go with option, is it B with two or B?
Two.
Oh, two.
How about two?
Author, okay, option two with the residential route.
Okay, so the motion's been made, um, by first that we go with option two with the residential route.
I'll second that.
Okay, and then seconded by Quavis. Any discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to see this come back because if ridership doesn't come up like we anticipate, I'm all for terminating it.
Yeah, or maybe we can invest the money in electric cars, bikes, and they can rent them here.
We can do that too. We can buy our own fleet. Okay, will the council please vote?
For item number eleven, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Might just one, two, three, four.
Next item is item twelve, consideration and direction of potential firework ballot measure.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Um, this is the evening of the fireworks. I just wanted to, um, let you know that, you know, this evening, this item is being presented to you at the request of Mayor Protem Hoffman-Gorman. We are seeking direction from you tonight regarding the potential placement of a ballot measure regarding the banning of all fireworks within the city of Longdale. Um, placing an item on the ballot on the upcoming November eighth general election would allow for Longdale residents to decide whether or not, um, they would like to have, um, safe and sane or just overall fireworks continue within the city of Longdale. Um, we did do an estimate to see how much it'll cost to add this measure to the ballot. Um, we're looking at approximately additional eleven thousand, round up seven hundred dollars. Um, at this time, staff is requesting that, um, you provide direction as to whether or not you would like for us to move forward in a ballot measure.
Okay, thank you for that report. Let's hear from the public on this item before we have some discussion. Mr. Randall.
Good afternoon, good evening. Just a quick aside because the chamber issue had come up. Uh, last year, they received about fourteen thousand dollars.
Can't let you do that.
You let him speak again.
Okay, it's the last time. See, you ruined it for everyone. Okay, go ahead.
Just a little quick, out of fourteen thousand dollars, they spent fifty-three dollars on candy, on Halloween candy. That's all that they justified so far.
Candy, okay.
Okay. Over the past ten years, whenever I suggested that there should be considerations in stopping the sale of safe and sane fireworks, I was told that the people have spoken. This would have been in reference to ballot initiatives in nineteen eighty-four and twenty, in two thousand two, in which voters responded to the affirmative to continue to allow the sale of sane fireworks. Both of these, both of these initiatives were passed by a small number of voters. In nineteen eighty-four, by one thousand two hundred and nine residents, and in two thousand and two, by nine hundred and fifty-four residents. The last ballot measure is twenty years ago, so it is time to present this to the voters once again. About a year ago, the city's website presented a survey of whether safe and sane fireworks should continue in Longdale. Majority of those that responded felt these sales should be stopped. Although the results of this survey were not part of a council agenda, I brought this up at a council meeting. One of the complaints was that perhaps residents outside of Longdale responded. As a high percentage of Longdale properties have landlords residing outside the city, they have a right to weigh in on this matter that impacts their property. However, regardless of one's opinion of this survey, a ballot initiative will present a fair picture of the community's opinion on safe and sane fireworks. There's really no downside to putting this on the ballot. The residents of Longdale should have a say as to whether to continue this program. If they vote to continue it, then I will be limited to advocating for enforcement of illegal fireworks citations. The staff report indicates that to add this to the November election will be an additional eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Vanity expenditures have cost the city more. This would be money well spent and certainly not even half of what it costs to run the safe and sane fireworks programs. Look at how much of staff's time alone is spent overseeing this program. Having been a Longdale resident for twenty-five years now, I've been a taxpayer all these years, and this will be a valid use of taxes. I have contributed, contributed to this community all these years. It's time to let the speaking people speak once again, which is part of a democratic process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we heard the staff report and the, the public comment during the discussion on this item. Yes, ma'am.
Does this, does the eleven thousand dollar come out of general funds or could we use a measure fund to, to pay for this?
It's not eleven thousand dollars.
No, um, the eleven thousand is just the additional amount. Um, there is a separate cost for actually the general election. So, and this is typically comes out of general, of general fund. Um, so right now, we're not actually asking you for approval of any appropriations um, because we would actually incorporate this in our, um, upcoming budget for the next year because the, the timeline for actually, um, putting it on the ballot, ballot would be in June. So that means that we would need to go back and do some additional preparation before we actually move forward. So, so the cost probably would not just be eleven thousand, seven hundred.
Do we know approximately how much it would be?
No, no, I, I didn't have enough time to actually do any additional costs.
Yes, ma'am.
That's exactly what she just said. Why I wanted it to come up today is because I wanted to hit all of the places that we needed to hit in case it's the consensus of the, the council to put it on the ballot. As Randall stated, it was two thousand and two, the last time any, um, anything went out to our residents. And I don't know about the rest of you, but I hear over and over and over again the complaints of the fireworks. And my only hesitation on it truly is that those organizations, um, and churches that do tremendous jobs, and I'll be one of the first ones to say the Wesleyans take a dollar and they squeeze it twice. And they can do more with that dollar in regards to the, the children's programs that they offer than any, uh, I just can't even begin to imagine. But, and, and that's the hard part about possibly stopping the fireworks. But I think that there is enough residents out there that are voicing concerns that we have to listen and say, okay, let's vote.
And I, I did want to make some comments. So I want to, in full disclosure, also, in twenty eighteen, I did accept, uh, campaign funds. So I just want to be transparent about it. It was two fifty, hundred and fifty dollars, twenty eighteen. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure, just to be transparent about it. You know, I have my own thoughts about it. And so I just want to just, you know, I know it's been brought up before, but I just want to be transparent about that part. So in terms of the language for the ballot measure, because we did the sales tax a while back, and we had to hire a whole firm to look at the language. Um, because I think the way that the staff report reads now, it very much is, um, I don't know, when you're looking at election language, you have to be very careful about the way it's worded and, and I don't know in this case if we're subject to those laws as well as making it sound unbiased. That way it doesn't sound like it's gearing one way or the other. And so from what I understand, you might have to actually, do we have to hire a consulting firm also to make sure the language is appropriate? Because that's my concern is, is putting it just the way it's going to read. It might read very biased one way or the other.
In, in this case, I would say, no, you don't. Um, I have written initiative measures. I've written the city attorney's, uh, impartial analysis as well. This particular measure is very easy to write. It would say, should, uh, should safe and sane fireworks continue to be allowed in the city of Longdale? The explanation would then say a, a vote in favor of fireworks would leave the city of Longdale municipal code as is. A vote against fireworks, however we frame it, would remove the following sections of the code and would replace them with a ban on all fireworks, both safe and sane and illegal fireworks. As I say, fairly easy to write. You're absolutely right, ma'am. Tax measures, I wouldn't want to write a tax measure myself. I would recommend that you do exactly what you did. That's the right thing to do. This measure, my office could write without a problem.
Okay, so then we're looking at roughly the eleven. And then I'll go into some other thoughts because I, I, I haven't, I know we get the annual complaints about fireworks, um, especially on the Fourth of July, but we don't always get, it's, I think the only ones I hear personally are the ones that are the illegal ones. And then with that going on, we get those complaints for New Year's, when the Lakers win, when the Rams win. So, you know, it, it's one of those things where, you know, it, it, it's, you know, and then I, 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 you know, with this measure in mind, I talk to my family because they're, in full disclosure, they're big firework fans for safe and sane ones. Uh, my mom can't stand the illegal ones, but, you know, I, I had conversations with them and they were just like, why are you, you know, you know, they, I kind of got a mouthful from them about this. But, so I'm trying to, to look at this in the bigger picture of things because I, you know, for example, Long Beach, they ban all fireworks, and, uh, my sister says it sounds exactly the same as Longdale over there. So I, I think in, in some ways, there's a little bit of a mix-up between the illegal and legal ones. And then the next point I want to bring up is that when you bring ballot measures forward and the council makes the decision to place them on the ballot, we have to be careful also about other possible requests that come forward. And if they're not by petition, then you might open up the floodgates for other, you know, random concerns here and there. Because I do feel like we get, I feel like when people are upset, they'll usually complain, be more likely to complain. Like if you go to a restaurant, you're more likely to give a bad review than a good review. And with that kind of mentality, it concerns me that we're hearing, we're hearing the complaints because of, you know, the illegal ones going off, but I'm not actually hearing, you know, unless I go out there, then I'm hearing residents who actually enjoy that, you know, the community groups that use the funds and some of the, I'm trying, I'm just wondering like who's buying those safe and sane fireworks because they, they do seem to be popular and people seem to be wanting to use them, taking advantage. So I'm trying to reconcile the two mentalities of, you know, how many people, you know, are we going to put this on the ballot? And then we spend the money, but, you know, in reality, it's only maybe a few people. I could completely be wrong, but is it a few people that are coming forward and being angry versus people who actually like them who are just aren't coming forward because they're just, you know, used to every? they're just, you know, used of every year using those? So, so those are the two conflicting thoughts in my mind. So, it, it just, I'm concerned that if we put it on the ballot without some kind of a petition or something of that form, it might open the gates for other people bringing in requests for other measures. And then do we have to, you know, because we put this one on, do we have to indulge other groups as well? And so, that's kind of where I'm at.
Yes, sir. I have to tend, I agree with Bernard then. If we, first of all, I don't want to see us put a ballot measure on. If these residents want to do it, they get a petition and put it on the ballot themselves. I don't think the city's responsible for their decision. Why are we spending our taxpayers' money that probably do like the fireworks to, what's it, baby, the few that speak of illegal fireworks? What would be, like Bernard said, every time the Dodgers, when we got to put it on the ballot, no more celebrating the Dodgers, no more celebrating the Lakers, no more celebrating the Rams. What's next? Do you want to put a ballot measure on? Ban dogs because don't be okay with the dog poop? Come on, this is ridiculous. If these people want to do this, they get their petition started. I signed a petition in front of Vaughn, so I'm not going to tell you what it was about. But, if they want to put this on the ballot, let them go out, get the signatures and present it and put it on the ballot, not at the city's expense. And one more little thing, I don't know if you remember this young man's name, his name is Francis Scott Key. He was on the ship, a British ship. And he made the famous song that we celebrate every, every week probably. It's called "The Star Spangled Banner" with rocket-shaped glare, bombs bursting in there. That's our freedom. Fireworks are our freedom. And by God, I'm a veteran and I would have died for this country, and I'm going to see fireworks being here, this city, for my family, my kids, my grandkids, my great-grandkids, and my generations past. Thank you. I'll get off my soapbox now.
Drop the mic?
I'll drop the mic.
Very, very, very good, very good. You want to add something?
Could I add something? I, now knowing how much it'll cost, I don't want it in the ballot. I'd rather use these funds to prevent or hire more sheriffs to drive around and stop the illegal ones. I know that from experience, when I was in Little League, we used those funds for the baseball gears, even repairs of, right now, they're doing repairs to the snack shack. So, if those that are participating in the safe and sane are using the funds for the right thing, then I would keep the safe and sane and patrol the illegal ones.
Yeah. Yeah, the, thank you for that input. Yeah, so it's kind of like being in a quandary. I mean, you have the illegal fireworks and you, which most people don't enjoy. Obviously, the people who's discharging them enjoying, but most people don't enjoy the illegal fireworks. And then, of course, you have the safe and sane fireworks that a lot of people do enjoy. I know when my kids was growing up, we, they enjoy, although we only bought them one time because they never, well, because they never wanted to spend their allowance money, they wanted me to spend it and I refused. But that's a different story. So, we only, yeah.
You didn't buy them the kids.
So, we only did it one time, right? But they would enjoy going out on the block and watching others discharge their safe and sane fireworks or what have you. And my, I suspect that a lot of families, well, I know a lot of families, a lot of kids actually do buy them and enjoy them. So, we don't want, so I'm not inclined to punish those who, who want to use safe and sane fireworks for the enjoyment of the family, plus those who sell safe and sane fireworks to benefit their organization in the community. One reason why I wouldn't want to, not inclined to do so is because I am not convinced that if you eliminate safe and sane fireworks, you will eliminate the annoying illegal fireworks. And the councilwoman hit it right on, I've been in Long Beach several times during the Fourth of July, and I never knew all that time that, you know, that it was illegal. Safe and sane fireworks was illegal in the, in the city of Long Beach. Who would have known? Who would have thought that there was illegal, right? There's absolutely no difference, right? So, if you remove safe and sane fireworks, right, and let's take Long Beach as a case, then you will still have the annoyance of the illegal fireworks. And, but you would eliminate the opportunity for families and service organizations to provide fireworks for the community. That's my, that's my quandary. You know, so to me, is it, is it fair to have, to what I would call an emotional reaction? Because I have not seen any data to suggest if you remove fire, illegal fireworks, that all of us, not illegal fireworks, the safe and sane fireworks, that all of a sudden the community is going to be significantly quieter during the Fourth of July and the days, you know, before and after. I have not seen that type of data that would suggest that. So, until I see some type of data that suggests that, how do I justify taking away these opportunities for our service organizations and, and our families without the justification? If the justification is that all of a sudden, we're going to, because we eliminate those, we're going to also eliminate the illegal ones, which is really the problem, I need something to justify that. And I don't have, and I haven't seen anything in all the things I've read to justify it. So, I mean, myself, I don't, I'm not really a fan of the fireworks, you know, myself. But when I was elected to this body, it wasn't, you know, my preference. It's like, don't vote based on what I would do or what have you, but what I think is best for the community at large, you know, because like I said, we only bought fireworks that one year. And my oldest is twenty-one. So, so, but I think it's still in the best interest of the, of the community. So, I would be not inclined to spend eleven thousand dollars when we could use it on suppression of illegal fireworks and hoping that we'll get a better return there. And there's always the option of if someone feels that motivated about it, just like any other initiative, you can put it on the ballot like, like suggested. That's my initial thoughts on it.
Can I piggyback on you, Robin?
Yes, sir.
If we, if we ever did, you know, decide to ban fireworks, the parents or the children here are going to go and find fireworks anywhere. They're going to buy the illegal ones, or they'll go to Hawthorne where they sell safe and sane, bring them back here. So, that's going to put more pressure on the sheriffs because now they have to worry about the illegal, plus the illegal legal ones. So, it's, it's, I, I just don't understand what this, even talking about this. I think the residents of Lawndale, unless you can prove to this council that thirty thousand residents don't want fireworks, I think we should take the eleven thousand dollars, move it to the sheriff's suppression on Fourth of July.
Do we have anyone that wanted to speak on this? Okay, I'll, I'll let you, come on, Mr. George, I'll let you speak on this side.
There's a little prejudice on that, that's why I would like to speak something. The legal fireworks only four foot high. Don't go any higher than that. The illegal fireworks go way up in the sky. They're going to hit on the roofs of the houses and it may create a fire. And also, it will burn and you will have more ER issues with those because you're going to burn their hands, whatever they're going to do. So, are we going to eliminate those four-foot-high fireworks? Have you seen the kids really enjoy it? They really are happy. And also, not only that, it will help also our Lawndale Little League or any, or any other nonprofit organization to benefit by it. Because we have improved Jane Addams. I mean, everybody can speak for that. We also provide the uniforms for the kids. We have now three hundred kids for this year. Where are they going to go if there's no way to pay for the uniform? We provide it all pretty much. And why take it away? Why do some people, they don't like the illegals? How are you going to take care of that one? But don't take it away from four-foot-high fireworks and for the kids to enjoy and to have kids, like, for instance, our fifty-seventy team last year, they all made high school. I mean, these are opportunities for kids to make it into high school and to college. I mean, you got to look down the road, you got to look down that chain. And if you just look at a firework, sure, it may be annoying, but it's the illegal one. Like, what said by one of your councilmember, get more police if that's what it takes. But don't take it from the kids. Don't take it from the community. And you will find like pads that illegal fireworks, and it'll be twice as worse. I mean, you're really going to have to leaf tail. You know, come on, let's vote this the right way. The legal ones, again, four foot high. What are you going to do? It's up to you guys.
Thank you for those comments.
Let's do it right. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And his name was George, in case you didn't see him.
He did say his, well, I said his name, it is George.
This was exactly the discussion I wanted us to have because, like I said, out in the community, it is, it is a topic, and I don't know if any of you are hearing this at the same amount as I am. And so, that's why I wanted to bring it up tonight. So, I appreciate all of you and everybody's opinion that is up here on the dais.
Absolutely. Just a quick story real quick. So, I mean, I, I know I'm handsome, but I just have one little flaw right here.
Where?
So, that was by, what is it called, a cannon? No, what do they call it, Roman candle? Yeah, Roman candle, Roman candle, you know, when I was younger. So, even though I've been a victim of, you know, safe and sane fireworks, you know, used improperly, right, which could have easily hit me in the eye, right, and it could have really been a situation, I still think, you know, used properly. I did, yeah, I got to, I got to do it yearly, yeah.
The asterisk on the other side.
It's only so, it's only so I can remember it, you know, so, because I'm getting older, right? I want to be able to tell it to my grand, grandkids, and they haven't arrived yet. So, yeah, so, but that was because someone was negligent, so technically, it was safe and sane, but because they was using it wrong, I was part of it too. Okay, so is this like a receive and file discussion? I think so. Yeah, I think so, right.
Yes, unless you were going to give us direction to move forward, we can receive and file and be finished. Thank you, sir.
Unless there's any further discussion, we'll move on to the next item. Item thirteen concerning city council subcommittees. Who wants to give that one?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This item before you is for your discussion and review as it relates to the appointments of the city council subcommittees. Over the years, it appears that the city has reviewed and assigned subcommittee appointments to determine which committees may be dissolved or modified based on the completion of the task associated with the committee. It appears that this is taken place annually. You currently have a total of nine subcommittee, combination of subcommittee, standing committees that are up for review. One of them is the City School District Park Maintenance and Joint Use Subcommittee. The last appointment's made for that one was in January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, the fiscal year, prior fiscal year budget subcommittee. That appointment was made and also in January nineteenth of twenty twenty-one. The billboard subcommittee, also January of twenty twenty-one. The Metro Sea Line, Green Line Extension Subcommittee. That appointment was actually made March fifteenth, but because we're so close to the March fifteenth, I thought it would be a good idea for you to consider that subcommittee. The other one is the Business Revitalization Committee, January of twenty twenty-one, and the City School District Committee, January of twenty twenty-one. So, at this time, we're asking that you take a look at the current committees and subcommittees and provide direction to staff as to the appointments and or modifications deemed necessary.
Okay. I think what we should do is, is look at them and if, if someone feels a desire to, to modify, they could say so. If not, we can just deem to re-affirm our point.
May I make a question?
Go ahead.
I like it, but can, let's, we leave this until after the November election and decide in December? Because there might be changes on the council?
Yeah.
Can we do that?
We could always bring it back. The purpose of us bringing it back tonight is really mainly for the budget subcommittee because we are going to get ready to start the budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. So, that one is probably the most important one that we would need to determine whether or not you would like to continue with the current appointments or assign or appoint someone different.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to continue in that subcommittee if possible.
And I'd like to meet myself again.
Yeah, I think we should continue that committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we just need to confirm, reaffirm to the staff that we want to keep it and we want to keep the members.
I'd like to stay on the same committees that I've already been serving on.
Well, we're going to keep, we're going to keep those.
The billboard committee, the subcommittee, it hasn't met at all.
We're going to keep, we're going to keep those anyway, until at least November or December. But the ones she really need direction on tonight is the, the budget subcommittee because they're going to be doing budgets soon. I say we keep that committee in. I'm, I'm fine with the two that's on the map, they want to continue. So, why don't we continue with the, the budget subcommittee and continue with Kearney and Quivers being the members of the subcommittee? And we can revisit the other ones after November.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you for bringing that. Okay, next item, items from the mayor and city council members, attendance and reports and meetings, anything you want to report. Let's hear from Councilman Kearney.
I have the mic. Just a couple of things. I asked, I am, I asked the council next agenda, I'd like to have the Lawndale Lady Cardinals come here to present their certificates because they won the CIF championship, not the other school, Lawndale Cardinals. And I'd like to close in memory of this meeting, we did done, and the name of Norm Vickers, he was a longtime Lawndale resident. He was on my board in the eighties at Little League. He passed away last, I have information on my phone, I'll present it then.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Councilwoman Suarez?
So, I, for attendances, I attended, and I hope I, I don't know, I might have missed some. On February twenty-third, the mayor and I attended a ribbon cutting at Sabrino's Kitchen on Prairie. It is, I thought it was like Mexican food, but they, they have hamburgers and, and other, like, I guess, Argentinian, they have chimichurri salads and stuff. So, it was nice to, to see the owners in there, so we're very excited. I think they might be on food delivery if anyone wants to try them too. But that, that was nice to see, you know, coming out of the pandemic, you know, that we're opening new businesses. And then I did attend on February twenty-fourth, the South Bay Cities Council Government Board of Directors Meeting. I did want to make one note because they did do an update on the metro board meeting, and they mentioned how there was a discussion around the budgets of some of the existing projects and how they've already run out of the funding. And, I mean, it's, it's historically how they've kind of ran all of their projects, but this time, I think there were questions about looking at budgets for upcoming projects to see how those are going to be funded. So, that might be something that you want to bring to the subcommittee about funding for the, for our specific affected area. And then I did attend, oh, the, the, the walks that Metro conducted this past weekend on the fifth, there was a, they did a, I did two walks. One was on the right-of-way and then one was on Hawthorne Boulevard, just to kind of give residents a visual of how it was going to look. And then there was one item that I wanted to ask, and this might take some time to kind of draft up. A while back, when we looked at the permit process, we went to deposit base versus fees. And I believe at the time when it was adopted, our former councilmember Osborne had requested kind of something of an update of how that process was actually working. I've had, had a few calls from residents about their deposit being more than the actual work being done. So, you know, I just kind of want to take a look at that and, and how that's working out and, and, you know, if it's working good for some people, because I did get a few complaints about that. I just kind of want to make sure we, we look at how it has been working in actuality versus when we voted on it. And with that, I'll pass it along.
All right, you guys ready? Because I have a whole page of things. I participated in the twenty twenty-two Greater L.A. Homeless Count back on February twenty-third. This was a very late night perspective of how the city looks from eight to midnight. I recommend that everybody drives around after eight. You get to see a lot of people sleeping in their cars. We had a small section, we counted five cars with people sleeping in them, and one homeless person sleeping on Hawthorne Boulevard. But I did not realize we had so many people sleeping in cars. One in particular sleeps right behind us in the street parking. He sleeps there. So hopefully, Lassa will reach out to him and, you know, help him out. I really want to thank Diane and Beckham for their time and effort to make the program work. They stayed until midnight. They made sure everybody had their routes, that their equipment was working. This year, everything was on an app, so we, some of us had difficulty getting the app started, and Beckham was there to help out. Diane did great work putting everything together and keeping us all in check. So thank you to Diane and Beckham. I also was on the call for the South Bay City Cog, and they talked about the new L.A. County Public Health Community, the Curtis Tucker Center for Community Wellness that opened up this year. So, and it's, it provides all type of health, so our, our citizens could attend the, the Community Wellness Center. I have a couple of things. I want to, I, before I get to the other notes, I did participate in, on Saturday's Metro Sea Line Walk, both the corridor, the Compton Corridor and Hawthorne Boulevard. I don't think Metro advertised that well because, like Bernadette said, we had one Longdale citizen on our first group and then one on the second group. But I asked people on this side of town, which would be Marine North, and they did not know about the Metro Walk. I think they just focused on maybe a radius around where the Metro was gonna be, but I don't think they reached out to the Longdale citizens. So maybe you guys could bring that out to your next meeting. Also, I believe his name was Mike, one of the developers or the person in charge. He said he was gonna go and speak to those residents that were on the corridor between One Seventieth and Redondo, wherever the, it ends, that he was gonna go and survey first to see who is being affected, and he was gonna go talk to them. So hopefully, they'll, they'll do that.
Can you see his name? It's Mike?
I think it was.
I have more information on that.
Was it Mike? The older gentleman? Oh, I have his business card.
Take a picture and catch a picture.
Okay. I also attended the League of California Cities General Meeting last week. They talked about the new redistricting of Assembly, Congress, Senate, all that. Some of us stayed in the same district, but you could see where it's not fair to some other cities. It was very interesting. And a lot of us did not participate on the calls asking for the redistricting not to be moved. So there was no participation from citizens asking not to move us. I, I would like to see if we could review city codes and ordinance. I've had several residents that are saying that they're confusing. One will say one thing, and then they read another code and assess something different. So maybe if we could simplify the codes and maybe see if we can make it easier for the residents to go online and look for those. Like Bernadette said, I also received complaints about the deposits, where the work is, the, the property, whatever they're gonna do, costs more than the deposit that they have to put down. Maybe we could go, depending on the type of work and their budget, we could charge for that fee. I don't know how it was set up. And that could explain why on Sundays we have residents doing illegal work around Longdale. You could walk down Longdale and you'll see people doing fences or putting artificial grass. So, you know, maybe we could look into the deposits. William Green doesn't have the swings yet. Mike, do we have the swings?
We got a letter from the manufacturer approximately six weeks ago, and we actually put the piece on the website. The swings, swing seats, they call it belts, the chains and all the other attachments, were on a eight-week delivery, but we got a letter, like I said, about a month ago saying that it's looking like April first now. And it's the supply chain issue with the raw materials. So they're getting raw materials from different countries and whatnot, and it's slowing down their production. So it's frustrating. I'm getting calls about that all the time. That's why we put it on the website, but we're hopeful that they'll come in soon.
Do you think we'll have it spring break or when the kids are on vacation?
I think we'll have, when is spring break? It's late this year, isn't it?
It's like towards the end of April, I think.
Yeah, I'll check that out, but I'm expecting around April first.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And I would like to bring back the farmer's market. I don't know how we could do it. I know it was part of the chambers, but people have been asking for farmer's market now for the spring, so I don't know how we could get that up out here, if someone could contact the chamber and ask them if they could put it back.
It doesn't have to be the chamber. Council, Mayor Pro Tim Rudolph, Steve Dresso, and I started the farmer's market. The chamber was not involved, but as we changed hands, it got less and less and less of farmer's market, and it's more like papousas, garbo corn, plants, peanuts. It was not a farmer's market. That's why we disbanded. If you, you gotta get certified growers here. The health department comes in and checks them. It's not just an overnight thing. It took months to get it going. So you want to get a farmer's market started, you gotta get real farmers there, not, okay, cotton candy, oh, I say pousa again. She's looking at me funny. But junk. Let me just put it that way, junk. There was not a farmer's market there.
So Mike, maybe when you get a full staff, maybe look into that if we could?
Absolutely, yeah.
When you get your full staff.
Exactly. It's a community services department event, absolutely.
And then I would like to get an update on the property that's located on Hawthorne and Manhattan. What's going on? It's been an empty lot now ever since I moved to Longdale over twenty-plus years. Are they gonna start going up, or are they gonna just resell?
I can answer that right now. They already have a specific plan amendment in, and it's been rejected by the city. They want too much density. So we're gonna meet with the developers to discuss moving forward, because they want to do a mixed-use project, but it's not zoned for it properly. So that's where it's at right now. They haven't resubmitted applications or revised plans yet based on last year's comments and letter to them sent by staff.
Can you keep us posted on that?
Yes.
Thanks. Thank you. And that will be all. Sorry it took a while.
That was three pages.
Okay, that's enough for the next couple of meetings.
Yes, I don't have anything for the next one.
Okay, thank, thank you, Councilman Quivers. Mayor Pro, CM of Hawthorne.
So I'll be short and sweet to make up for it. So I only have two different things that I want to bring up. The first one is tomorrow night is our Metro Sea Line Meeting, and I would encourage all of you to give me some feedback either here tonight or give Sean feedback, because he'll be in the meeting with us, about what your feelings of the tours were. And I know that I listened to the residents, and I also heard the same thing, that over fifty percent of individuals groups were made up of non-Londale residents. I don't know how to get the word out or what suggestions to make. After hearing some of the frustration after this weekend, my thought was maybe have Metro, the next time that we meet, put the banners over Hawthorne Boulevard so that they're in plain sight when people are coming down. Maybe they need to have one side in English and one side in Spanish. I don't know what to suggest. I've heard several individuals as well say that they did not know it was advertised. And the only thing I could come up with is that I felt that when I originally saw the advert, the postcard that came about the tours, and I expected that to be coming, my first thought was, it looks like a piece of trash mail that I would probably just toss if I didn't know what I was actually looking for. So I would like some feedback so that tomorrow night when we meet, and whether that be a telephone call, a text, an email, something that we can present so that we have some feedback to Metro as to what our feelings were. The other thing, and I have to say thank you to Sean and staff, last week it dawned on me, we are coming up on March twenty-first for a spring cleanup week. And thinking about it and driving through the city and seeing the miscellaneous large items that are being left at strange places. And I, I hear residents say it's because when they're getting new furniture, the companies are no longer taking the old stuff. And so therefore, it's like, I think people are thinking it's, well, we'll just dump it off here, and it's in strange locations. I wanted to get the word out that our spring cleaning week is coming up sooner than later so that people have the opportunity to do it correctly and maybe lessen some of the stuff that we're seeing. And that I, and, and trust me, I believe that outsiders from outside of Longdale are actually bringing their stuff in and dumping it on our streets. I don't just think it's the Longdale resident. And what's the frustrating part is knowing that not only do we have these two opportunities a year for the spring cleanup, but we also have the availability to call Republic, and a couple of times a year, they will pick up from our house large items if we chose. So I had asked Sean and staff to go ahead and start publicizing our spring cleanup week as being the week of the twenty-first earlier and make it a habit now of trying to get it out six to eight weeks ahead of time so that we do do individual home cleanings so that we aren't so messy. That's it for me.
Thank you. So I take it that you saw the couch that was under the?
Freeway?
No, it was Manhattan Beach underpass. You saw the couch?
Yes, yeah, in fact, it moved.
Was it a lovely couch?
I called on a Saturday night, and I told Julian about it.
Yeah.
And by the time I drove back through twenty minutes later, it had actually moved.
Guess there was a rearranging of furniture, huh? Right, right. Yeah, I, I had, that remind me of sometime, I, I don't think I actually made it an official proposal, but I, it was, I guess I was just opining on the fact that when people leave things in front of their homes or a lot of apartments do that too, by the way, and it's just because they're moving. You know, they just want to, they don't want to take it with them, so they leave the mattress there or the couch there or what have you. But to me, that's the same as dumping. Just because it's in front of your house, if it's not, if you, if you didn't schedule a pickup or it's not the same day as the regular, you know, trash pickup or what have you, then to me, that's dumping. That's the same as dumping. So I don't know why that's allowed. I mean, if you, if you took that same piece of furniture and you put it somewhere else that would, you know, not your house, that would be dumping, and it would be a fine or whatever is associated with it. So I don't know why we don't have some type of ordinance that say, no, you, you have to get rid of this stuff properly, you know. If nothing else, the day of the trash, even if you for some reason think, oh, they could, they can take this big screen television, which they can't, but let's say, let's pretend like you didn't know that, right? It seemed like to me that if your intentions were pure, it would be on the day that they were gonna pick up the trash anyway. Okay, and that might be forgivable, you know, even if that's not something that's, that they will pick up or what have you. But when you leave it in front of your house, just indefinitely, just hoping somebody would pick it up, it'd just magically disappear, you know, what have you. I don't think that should be, should be allowed, you know.
Can I add one more thing? Another thing I learned this week with Republic, and it's not that I learned it. It was a reminder, and it's a good reminder. What I'm hearing on some of our seniors, you know, when we're putting out our trash, some of us are putting it on the curb and others are putting it in the gutter. And some of our seniors are having a really difficult time when they're leaving their trash bins up on the curb. And then when they're being returned, they're being returned in the gutter to where the senior has to pull it up onto their curb. And when talking to the Republic reps, their comment was, when we have seniors or people with any types of disability, they actually have a service in which that trash hauler is to walk your cans back and forth from the resident to the street, dump them and return them so that, to save that resident the ability to do that. And so that was a really good reminder too this week that I experienced, and I wanted to share that as well.
Thank you for, thank you for adding that. Just real quick, I attended the sanitation district regular meeting, the Metro Wall, and the Grand Open Sabrino's as well. You might want to try the, the chicken crispy sandwich. Someone asked me today, was that my, you know, would I try it again? Because I had it tonight, and I said, this, this is again, you know. So, so that was my second time I'm having it. So go check them out. They're right on Prairie, what's across the street? Right across from the, what's that market?
Nor.
Northern Market.
North Gate.
North Gate, yeah, right across from North Gate on the Longdale side. And with that, we do have one closed session, a conference with legal counsel concerning existing litigation. I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give us the provision of the closed door.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We'll be going into closed session under Government Code Section 54956.9D1 regarding ongoing litigation, and we hope to make that quick for you tonight. Thank you.
Okay, we have returned from closed session. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to, and the city, um, attorney to give the report of the closed session. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the city council was briefed on the one item of, uh, existing litigation. No reportable action was taken this evening. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Now, we, we have an adjournment. I'm gonna swing it over to Councilman Pat Kearney.
Okay, I wanna adjourn this meeting in memory of Norm Vickers. He would have been sixty-six years old this year, October. He had, he was married for forty, well...